Good evening. We are gathered here in Kettering Fairmont High School in the recital hall. Today is May 6, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We are gathered for our regular session. We will start off with the reading of our mission. The mission of Kettering City Schools in partnership with the family and community is to guarantee a superior educational learning experience for all students by providing a positive and innovative learning environment while responsibly utilizing resources. Mr. Blevins, will you please take the role?
Mr. Lauder?
Here.
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mrs. Kane?
Here.
Mrs. Richards?
Here.
Mr. Martin? Here. Do we have an adoption of the agenda?
Yes, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with the addition of the addendum item number 10, human capital, with the addition of a human capital item number 10 A1C. Second?
Thank you. Mr. Blevins, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes. If you're able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is minutes from the April 15th, 2025, regular session and the April 29th joint session with the city of Kettering.
I move that we approve the minutes, both from the April 15th regular session and the April 29th joint session with the city of Kettering.
Do they have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins, will you please take the role?
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, recognition of reports, academic scholars.
Hi, I'm Randy Moller, and I'm one of the counselors here. I just want to thank all of you that came out tonight to honor the academic scholars, and I just want to give you a brief description of how we categorize an academic scholar. So these are the best of the best, and it really is very impressive, the things that you all have accomplished, and I know it's taken a lot of dedication on the student's part and the family's part, so thank you. But the requirements for academic scholars are a 30 on the ACT or a 1330 on the SAT, a national merit recognition, or an IB diploma candidate. Some of the scholars tonight that are being recognized will have more than one category that they're being recognized for. So again, congratulations, please get some cupcakes and punch after. Oh, and we're gonna do a photo out there, if that's okay, the lighting's a little bit better, so thank you. Oh, Ms. Denzlo's going to announce everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Moller, and I just want to publicly thank her for all of her work that she puts, putting this together for our top scholars. So, without further ado, students, when I call your name, if you could please stand in front of the stage as I call your name, and we will begin with Isabella Atlick, 30 on the ACT, National Merit Hispanic Scholar. Ian Blakely, 33 on the ACT. I'll read through the rest and we'll clap at the end if that's okay, that way we'll... Jocelyn Bornan, IB diploma candidate. Hannah Boyer, 31 on the ACT. Victoria Chavez, 32 on the ACT. William Chen, 33 on the ACT, and National Merit First Generation Scholar. Austin Daniel Blythe, 33 on the ACT. Nora Durth, 32 on the ACT. William Falk, 31 on the ACT. Violet Fasha, IB diploma candidate and 31 on the ACT. Luke Franlin, 33 on the ACT. Michael Halleck, 32 on the ACT. Adam Hart, 31 on the ACT. Olivia Hayes, IB diploma candidate. Bushra Henway, 30 on the ACT. Vivian Holmes, 32 on the ACT, and also the voice of our Fairmont morning announcement, thank you. Alyssa Jordan, 30 on the ACT. James Keaton, 34 on the ACT. Josiah Klein, 34 on the ACT. Brendan Lamb, 31, ACT. Cameron Liming, IB diploma candidate. Lydia Little, 30 on the ACT. Jude McManus, 35 on the ACT, and a national merit semifinalist. Kyle Mertz, 30 on the ACT. Sandler Miranda, 31 on the ACT. It's okay to make a second row if we need. Connor Morrison, 34, ACT, 1330, SAT, and National Merit First Generation Scholar. Chloe Mallory, IB diploma candidate, 34, ACT. Sean Patel, 34, ACT. Emmanuel Rashika, IB diploma candidate. Lilian Scarborough, 30, ACT. Natalie Shrek, 30, ACT. Ella Grace Schultz, 30 on the ACT. Anthony Spade, IB diploma candidate, 35, ACT. Beck Stevens, 32, ACT. Mirabelle Timmer, 32, ACT. Stella Toth, 32, ACT. And last but certainly not least, Kathleen Wright with a 33 on the ACT. Please give our scholars a round of applause. Photo opportunity, and then we'll take a group one up in the lobby. Okay, at this time, if you would like to join us at the lobby for some punch and some treats?
Well, before you all leave, I know your backs are to us, it's okay.
That's the voice from way in the back.
Yeah, sorry.
We're gonna photobomb your pictures.
But congratulations to each and every last one of you. Your achievements are outstanding, congratulations to all the parents that we can no longer see, but happy to have you all out here. You are representing Fairmont and the Kettering City Schools to its finest, so please keep it up, and please, you know, I encourage you to mentor some of our young folks to walk in your path because you are setting the example. So again, thank you and congratulations to each and every last one of you. We will reconvene. Next item on the agenda, Board of Education member reports, do we have any?
Not right now.
All right. Next item, hearing it in public regarding agenda items, I was not notified of we had anyone. Next item on the agenda, information for decision-making, items for upcoming meetings. On May 20th, 6:00 PM, here in the regular meeting here in the recital hall, Kettering Fairmont High School, we will go over personnel items. On June 17th, 6:00 PM, will be a regular meeting here in the recital hall at Kettering Fairmont High School, again, personnel items. And then July 8th, 6:00 PM, regular meeting here in the recital hall, Kettering Fairmont High School, again, personnel items. Next item on the agenda, Board of Education. Agenda items, anyone?
Nothing.
No items, okay. Next item on the agenda, human capital, motion?
I move that we approve the human capital agenda as presented, including the human capital agenda item number 10 A1C.
Thank you. Do they have a second?
Second.
Ms. Carter Stewart?
Yes, I have human capital agenda items that I'm asking the board's approval. This is a really important time of the year, it begins the busiest part of our hiring season, and so we're very pleased and off to a great start in at the conclusion of the board's approval. We have a few special people in the audience that I would like to take an opportunity to recognize, so we'll ask the board's approval.
Mr. Blevins, will you please take the role?
Yes. Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes. Ms. Carter Stewart, back to you.
Great, so we have Dr. Erin Horton, our special ed supervisor, is here with our newest member of our school psychology team, and this is Madeline, she goes by Maddie Gronetti, did I say the...
I forget why Maddie.
Maddie.
Gronati.
Gronati, so I will not, I will not, I will not mess that up ever again. Maddie Gronati is here as our school psychologist, so we'd just like to give her a warm welcome to the Firebird family. Thank you. And somebody that is not new to the Firebird family but is here with her biggest fan base is our very honored and privileged to announce, Dr. Candy McCoy will be serving as the new Kettering Middle School principal. Dr. McCoy has had a stellar career here at Kettering and has done a phenomenal job in walking in the footsteps with Brian Snyder and the wonderful, amazing middle school team, and she has done a superb job working with that team, and we're really looking forward to the great things that will happen under Dr. McCoy's leadership. So, welcome again, Dr. McCoy, and congratulations, and you have, you have some very special people with you, so I know we've met them before, but they deserve to be recognized, so if you would like to introduce the people you have here.
Absolutely, this is my husband, Officer John McCoy. My mom and dad came and surprised me today, so I'm excited to have you here with the toys, and these are my three little Firebirds, Lowell, Kami, and Kay.
Great, well, thank you.
Congratulations to you all, thank, welcome to the district, and Dr. McCoy, looking forward to spending time in your buildings and, you know, really collaborating and helping you achieve all the things that you have planned, so congratulations again. All right, next item on the agenda, business services, motion?
I move that we approve the business services agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Carter Stewart?
I'm asking the board's approval, we have one item to approve the 25-26 Public School Safety Program Agreement between the city of Kettering and the Kettering City School District.
Mr. Blevins, please take the role.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lauder?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, Office of the Treasurer, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Office of the Treasurer's agenda as presented.
Do they have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins, floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, well, before I begin, I just want to say that I'm glad that my ACT score wasn't asked on my interview. It made me wonder what I did for four years when I seen these kids standing up here, so that's pretty impressive. Five-year forecast is required to be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education workforce twice annually, so it is presented in the fall, and the requirement is that it is before the end of November. Can you hear me, am I coming through okay? Is this better?
Is he coming through okay on the microphone?
Closer. Like on my lapel instead of on the table, maybe? Okay. Okay, so the forecast required to be submitted to the Ohio Department of Education in the fall, and then an update is presented and required to be submitted before May 31st. The forecast will include three immediate past years and then five years of projections, including the current fiscal year that we're in. Currently, the only, only the general fund is noted in the forecast, so we have, as we've talked about before, permanent improvement funds, there are building specific funds, there are student fee funds, none of that is input into the forecast, this is strictly general fund money, which is the most flexible for a district. So all five-year forecasts, once they get submitted, once they've gotten board approval, they are submitted to the Department of Education workforce, they get uploaded to the site that I've noted there, so if anybody wants to go and look at past forecasts, if that's your thing to sit and put yourself to sleep at night reading through those, they're all listed there for traditional schools as well as non-traditional. The forecast is a working document, so as I go through this and I kind of talk about some of the assumptions that went into creating the forecast numbers, it's important to understand that this is what we believe to be true and project at the time that it's submitted, and that things are constantly changing. So when I get into talking about revenue, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the proposed budget and the changes that we've seen there, and how those changes have impacted the district's revenue and the forecasted revenue. Something happens tomorrow where somebody comes out and they scrap the budget that's been proposed, and they come up with something new, then obviously that's gonna change the forecast, and so I can go back and I can rework those numbers, and that's what I do, is I've constantly taken a look at what we think to be true, and then as actual numbers come in, adjusting those based on those actual numbers for future projections. So major changes in revenue assumptions from the fall submission. The tax collections came in, so the spring settlements that we get, Montgomery County being the biggest portion of that, we get just a little bit from Green County, those came in a little later than normal, there was some rollover in the office at Montgomery County, and so after receiving the settlement payments and having the actual revenue pieces in, that helped project into the future revenue payments that we'll see that we're gonna receive a little bit more, and that's primarily, we have a projected increase in property valuations, and when that happens, you know, they roll back the millage on the existing levies, but what we do see is an increase in inside millage and on new construction. So those numbers are baked into the forecast, and I'll show you those here in just a second. Enrollment numbers play a part in how our state funding is determined, so those are baked in through March, take a look at what the enrollment projections are through March, use those to calculate state funding projections moving forward, but as you all know, there's been a shakeup in the state budget, what's been proposed. So in November, the state funding that was baked into the forecast dealt with an update to the input cost to the fair school funding formula. That was to update the base cost, so this is cost to educate a student, right, they look at teacher salaries, administrative salaries, and what it costs to educate a student, and they use that as part of the base cost calculations. The thought in November was that they would, as was planned and as it was presented initially, update those base costs to reflect 2024 costs, so they have 2024 actual numbers, the thought is that they would update those costs. That does not now seem to be the case, it seems as though they are gonna leave those numbers at the 2022 costs, and because of that, what you'll see is though, we'll see a slight variation what we expected to get in the next couple years, but that's gonna compound, and so when I show you these numbers, understand that this is looking at not necessarily what the district's gonna get, so when I show you and you see a number that says negative $7 million, it's not necessarily negative $7 million less than what we got this year, it's compared to what the November forecast said that we were going to get. Does that, does that make sense? Investment earnings have also increased, and so there were changes made to reflect that in the revenue piece. So here's the actual numbers, in the top right-hand corner, what that is, is that is the variance from the fall forecast for April, so we closed out the month of April, and since this has not been board-approved or submitted yet, the month-to-month financials are still looking back to the November forecast. So just up in the top right-hand corner, I just wanted to put that in there, since I'm presenting the forecast and I'm not presenting the monthly financials like I typically do, just wanted to let you know where we stand with that. So revenues are looking to come in about $2.6 million better than what was projected in November for the end of this fiscal year, so that's what that small blue box up in the top corner is showing you. And then the table there, you can see those changes that I made, once I received the settlements, show an update as compared to the November forecast. So that's looking at, okay, what was, what did we have in November for revenue numbers, and then given the input changes that I just spoke about when showing you the last slide, that's how it reflects here, so we see that we're gonna, we're anticipating that we're gonna get a little bit more in property taxes, again, that's from inside millage and from new construction numbers, and then our unrestricted and restricted state aid is going to rapidly decrease compared to what it looked like in November. Then the all-other revenue, that encompasses the interest that I spoke about. So major assumption changes for expenditures compared to the fall forecast, we got some data back, actual numbers from benefits and the costs associated with benefits in retirement. From there, we see that it's come in a little bit lower, and currently I think that that's probably due to the EMS program that's been implemented, we're seeing some savings from that. Capital outlay has been increased slightly just to show what we anticipate we would have to provide to kind of supplement the permanent improvement money. As we've got older buildings and they continue to age and more issues come up, and permanent improvement money is limited, we're going to have to continue to supplement that with general fund money. And then another thing to think about, month after month, I come in here and I talk about the expenditure and the variance from the forecast, and oftentimes the biggest variance there is salary and benefits. I'll say, you know, this year we're up $2 million compared to the forecast, and then next month it might be 2.5, down closer 1.8. I try to stay in that 1% to 3% range of overall expenditures of the budget, so there's a bit of a contingency baked into that number that will reflect any personnel changes that might come up. So just, just so that you're aware of that, so as we look at, this one's a little less exciting than the revenue slide I showed, but again, up in the top right-hand corner there, that is the variance from the fall forecast for the end of April's financials. So the expenditures are looking to come in about $2.9 million better than what was forecasted in November for the end of this fiscal year. And then the table shows the drop there in the retirement and benefits and the increase in capital outlay. And here is a visual representation, the bottom table is the November forecast, the top is the updated May forecast, and outside of the difference in colors, they kind of, they changed the way the software output it from November till now, that's why the tables themselves look different, but overall, there's still a projection of deficit spending that begins in 2027, that then grows throughout the remaining two years of the forecast, it's just that it grows at a little bit different pace due to the changes in state funding. So if the board approves that, that'll get submitted, it'll get updated, it'll be on Ohio Department of Education workforce's website.
Maybe a couple of questions and certainly one comment. My first question is, forgive me if you covered this, but is it too early to consider what impact, if any, the changes to STRS eligibility that were made very recently, what might have as it relates to folks who are now able to retire earlier than they could have, you know, 30 days ago?
Right.
And again, my suspicion is it's maybe too early to figure out what impact that may have on our district, but it seems to me that that could potentially have an impact on, on personnel costs on a longer-term basis.
Absolutely, and I know that human capital has been tracking that, and Mindy and I have had some discussions on looking at what possible changes could come from, maybe more people looking to retire sooner, and so that contingency that I mentioned that is in the salary and benefits, we'll be able to capture that there.
And then the second observation, and there's a question I'm sure baked in this somewhere, which is, as I recall, that some of the, some of the changes that are being discussed and being made in Columbus relate to the ability of a school district to deploy what I consider to be fiscally responsible economic policy, meaning able to maintain a certain level of reserves. And tonight, as you're giving your presentation, there are at least, I think, three occasions where it underscores to me why the ability of a district, particularly of our size, to be able to maintain some modest reserves is critical. So when you talk about timing as an example of tax revenue, we can't always depend on and predict accurately when the district receives tax revenue that it's entitled to, and so I think reserves are important in those circumstances. I also think that, from my perspective, I think the ability for this district to continue to do what we've done in the past, and I know you've done some analysis of this, Mr. Blevins, I do believe, but assuming that what occurs in Columbus is going to occur, am I right, that that will not, at least in the short term, impact the way that this district and this board has viewed sort of economic policy historically, meaning that we, we have a certain level of reserves, which is, in my estimation, frankly, very, very modest, but that if the legislation has been passed and it has the impact that it's gonna have, it ultimately will not impact this, this district?
That's correct, so the bill that got pushed over that's in the Senate currently being discussed, the cap was 30%, we are underneath that 30% cap currently, and then the projection for '26 would still have us right, right under 28%, so we'd still be under that cap if that were to go through, and then deficit spending beginning in '27 would begin to push that lower from 28% down. So, so yes, we've, we're already there, I guess we would already be in compliance if that was to go into effect, that part of the bill would not have an impact on us, it's more about the, the amount of state aid that the district gets, given that we're creeping closer to 27, 28% of our overall revenue coming from state funding.
And of course, on the state aid, we've been operating under a certain expectation for the last several months of a particular level, and now we know it's not gonna be at that level, which underscores all the more reason why I think it's fiscally responsible for us to be able to maintain a modest level of reserves, but with that, you've answered my questions, Mr. Blevins, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Isn't the state also considering only a three-year projection instead of your current requirement of five-year?
Yes, that's correct, so instead of giving a five-year, like I mentioned, it has three previous years, and then we project out for five years, using those three past years, it would years, it would only go for three years.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Next item, Teaching and Learning Agenda, Learning Agenda? Agenda? Do I have a motion? Thank God.
Mr. Martin, I'll move that we adopt the Teaching and Learning Agenda as it's presented, please.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Carter Stewart?
Yes, I'm asking the Board's approval for one item under Teaching and Learning, to approve the agreement between the Kettering City Schools and the Warren County Education Service Center for the 2025-2026 school year.
Any discussion? All right, Ms. Blevins, please take the roll.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Next item, Hearing of the Public, I have not received any notices.
Mr. Martin, I'm sorry, earlier I meant to make two comments in the section of the Board of Education Member Reports, and so with your indulgence, I'll, two things I wanted to share, thank you. The first is I had the pleasure of attending the, our celebration earlier, a week or so ago, of our student athletes who are recognized for academic and athletic accomplishments, and just an amazing group of juniors and seniors that we had the chance to celebrate. They're going to go off and do some wonderful things, so just again, a recognition of some very impressive students that we have here in their district. The second thing I wanted to comment on, and I see some of the ladies out in the audience here who were with us at our joint session with the City of Kettering, where we had sort of a soft opening for the Advanced Manufacturing CTC facility, and I just was blown away. I mean, the state-of-the-art equipment, state-of-the-art facility, we had some presentations by some students that, as an aside, I will never touch a, an energy drink again, because some of the testing they did, if you had any question, I can assure you, energy drinks are not good for you, but it was, it was just, it's an impressive facility, I'm very excited for our students, that is going to serve us, our students, this district for a long time to come, and really excited that we have students who are going to have the opportunity to work with some of the machines that they're going to have a chance to work with, and to work with the staff that we have here, to be able to, in some cases, walk right out of this building after graduation and be able to go into a job that is what I would describe as a well-paying, impressive position, and other kids who will take what they learned here in our buildings and go off to trade schools and do other fun and exciting things, but just very impressive. And so as far as the community is concerned, I think we should be awful excited that we have those capabilities here, of course, a big chunk of that was, as I recall, was funded through a state grant, so we're fortunate that we got that grant money, but just pretty, pretty cool, a pretty cool experience. And so for those people who were able to attend, I thank you for being there, and I will also confess that I think it's the first time in a long time that my face turned red when I jokingly said I had an American flag on my lapel pin, and people in the room then pledged to the American flag on my lapel pin, so that was a little awkward, but so anyway. Enough from me, Mr. Martin, I've shared my thoughts, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
I have two also, I wanted to wait till that we were at this point in the meeting. I have two shout-outs. The first is to the Human Capital Department, this particular agenda is a monstrous agenda for personnel items, and having had to do it in my past life, I know the amount of work and effort that goes into it, I also know it's a team effort, but congratulations to the Human Capital Department for that. And the second is kind of a piggyback on what Mr. Henderson said, had the opportunity last week to go to the Career Technology Center, or Career Technology Center Completers Ceremony, and this is where there were hundreds of our students who participate in the Career Technology Center, they were recognized by the particular program that they were in, and these are outstanding students in a number of ways. One was up here on the stage today as an outstanding scholar and is in the Career Technology Center in one of their programs, but some of these students walk out of here with thousands of dollars in college already taken care of. I think the figure total, if I'm not mistaken, was a million dollars worth of college education when they leave Fairmont High School. It's an unbelievable program, it's staffed well, it's led well, Mr. Lasso, Ms. Moller that you heard tonight during the presentation do a wonderful job, it is a gem. It's not a secret anymore, because we have people waiting in line to get in, but it is a community gem that we have the opportunity for students to take advantage of those programs, so thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Next item on the agenda, I motion that, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Blevins, please take the roll.
Mr. Lawter?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Now, the big question is, are there cupcakes and punch left for us?
That's right.